Okay, meeting called to order. This is the November 10th, 2025 Mayor Council Meeting. Would the clerk please read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, duly announced, advertiser posted in the municipal building. The meeting will adjourn at 10:00 PM unless the majority of the council members that are present vote to extend the time.
All rise for the pledge of allegiance. Councilman Salieri, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, standing for a moment's silence. Thank you. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mayor Kamala.
Present.
Councilman McCann. Council President Slazinski.
Here.
Councilman Pignotelli. Councilwoman Rose.
Here.
Councilman Saliani.
Present.
Councilman Talamiani.
Does the motion for excuses?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Right now, we're gonna do the swearing in of, first, we're gonna have two swearings in for the volunteer fire department. First is gonna be Casey Slaborski. So I'd like you to ask Casey to come forward with your family.
Where's the Bible?
It's right on the desk. I have it out there.
Somebody want to hold the Bible? Ma? All right, you ready?
Oh, wait, hold on. Can you stand here and you guys stand over there? Just reverse. It's better for the way the photos come out. There, and then this, yeah. Thank you. I'm sorry, I meant to tell you.
She's good for weddings as well.
Sorry about that.
All right, Casey, you ready? Put your hand on the Bible, raise your hand. Raise your hand. I, Casey Slaborski.
I, Casey Slaborski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear, that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And the governments established.
And the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of firefighter.
Of the office of firefighter.
Of Company Two.
Of Company Two.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. All right, this time I'll call Dana Paetz forward with his family. Somebody want to hold the Bible? Put your hand on the Bible. All right, you ready?
Aye.
I, Dana Paetz.
Aye, Dana Paetz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear, that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And the governments established.
And the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of firefighter.
Of the office of firefighter.
Of Company Two.
Of Company Two.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. All right, this time I'll call Dana Paetz forward with his family. Somebody want to hold the Bible? Put your hand on the Bible. All right, you ready?
Aye.
I, Dana Paetz.
Aye, Dana Paetz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And the governments established.
And the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
Justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of firefighter Company Two.
Of the office of firefighter Company Two.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. You're certainly welcome to stay. If you want to leave at this point, you're certainly welcome to leave as well. It's up to you.
She noticed I looked like the chief was down.
All right, we're up to the mayor's report. I have several items to discuss real quick. First of all, I want to thank the community and all the residents, businesses, restaurants that donated money, made contributions to the Pond's Food Pantry. As you know, we have about 84 families in Oakland here who received SNAP benefits that were canceled due to the government shutdown, including federal employees. So the food bank is actually really abundant in food right now, and please keep the donations coming. It's, I can't thank this community enough for, you know, the support that we've given to these families during these trying times. Yoppo Avenue, for those that have noticed that the Yoppo Avenue paving has been completed, including the new sidewalks on both sides at the bottom. Everything was striped on Saturday. They have, I think, one more day's worth of work to just put some curbs going up the road. The Truman Field Recreation Lighting Project will begin this week with the underground conduit and electrical work, including the foundations for the light towers, and we expect the light towers themselves to be installed sometime in January. Truck Day was a raving success. Committee reports have caught between 500 and 600 people that attended, so apparently everybody had a really good time. For the Patriots Way Bridge, the guide rail on Patriots Way, the vendor's still waiting for the weldments. That's the equipment that actually attaches the guide rail to the cement. We're expecting that to come in hopefully next week, but they expect the job to be completed by the end of the month. Veterans Day, remember tomorrow's Veterans Day, Tuesday, November 11th at 11:00 AM. Please come down and support the veterans in Oakland. There's gonna be a ceremony in Veterans Park. Also, the Oakland Drugs Building is gonna be back in front of the planning board this month for their second hearing on the application, and hopefully we'll see that project begin, and that's gonna be a Hackensack Medical Health Building. Also, starting at the end of the week into early next week, you're gonna start seeing the West Oakland Water Main Project begin, and I want to just make an announcement. The last outdoor market will be held on 10/3 this Saturday from 10:00 to 3:00 o'clock. And just a note of housekeeping, because of Veterans Day, Borough Hall will be closed tomorrow on Veterans Day. I also want to have our attorney make a quick statement under the mayor's report.
Thank you, everyone. Just wanted to confer that the borough has filed the interest arbitration regarding negotiations with the police department. Anything other than the actual act of filing is not to be discussed, is considered litigation, and is not to be discussed during open public sessions. With that said, anybody who would like to comment on the arbitration or the sort of, not the substance of it, but give their opinions as to the negotiations can do so pursuant to the rules of this council, which permits three minutes of comment period for 30 minutes. After 30 minutes, the Borough Council would then need to vote to extend that time. There will not be back and forth, and no member of the council can comment in response to the public comments.
Okay. With that being said, do I have a motion open to public?
So moved.
Councilman Salieri, do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Salieri, Slazinski, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody wish to comment for the public? We need your name and address.
Matt Dunford, 10 Lee Highway. I'd like to read something. The Oakland PBA's desperate attempt to pressure elected officials three to four days before an election during the early voting period is a despicable attempt to manipulate the borough and to put the financial position of Oakland at risk. The PBA purposely dragged their feet for months during negotiations over retiree benefits for the sole purpose of influencing our council elections. They thought their political stunt would cause the council to make a poor decision for the taxpayers they thought wrong. The PBA failed to provide Oakland taxpayers with the full facts. The simple facts are they want full retirement benefits paid for by the borough regardless of the impact to the taxpayers. The fact is when labor negotiations are at an impasse, the proper and professional method is to take the matter to arbitration. It goes on to call the PBA members bullies and concludes by saying this discussion is finished and we are off to arbitration. My question for the council, that was a campaign statement, says, "From Councilman Kevin Slazinski and Councilman John McCann." Kevin, it's nice to see you here tonight. John, wherever you might be, be good having you in your seat. And it was paid for by friends of McCann. My question's twofold, yet pretty simple. Was it this that pushed the council to arbitration? Seems like a campaign message declared as being paid for by a candidate to announce that a labor dispute between the Police Benevolence Association and the borough was going to arbitration. Do the words, the insults, and the threats made by this campaign statement reflect the feelings of the current sitting council?
Thank you. Next person?
I'll go. Jill Coletti, 73 Pawnee Ave. So I'm basically here tonight, first of all, good evening, Mayor Kamala and council. Like I said, my name is Jill Coletti. I reside at 73 Pawnee Ave for the last 20 years. I'm here tonight to actually speak about the humane pet store bill of New Jersey, Senate Bill 2511, Assembly Bill A4051, which would effectively stop puppy mills from doing business in New Jersey, but has been pushed back once again in the assembly. So while we wait, I'm here tonight as a resident of Oakland, a member of the Animal Protection League of New Jersey as well, and the co-founder and president of Serenity Paw's Animal Rescue Incorporated, to ask you to please consider to support and pass a town ordinance, the humane pet store ordinance, that would prohibit the sale of puppy mill dogs in pet stores should anyone ever try to open such a store in the town of Oakland. Fortunately, at the present time, Oakland currently does not have any puppies selling pet stores, so now is the ideal time to enact a preventative humane pet store ordinance. This ordinance would stop these stores from existing in Oakland and importing sick and unsocialized puppies for the sale to unsuspecting consumers for hundreds and sometimes thousands of dollars. It would also encourage people to consider adoption through shelters and rescues and even through a responsible breeder if that is their preference. The ordinance would also help address the pet overpopulation crisis and animal suffering. It is well documented that most pet store puppies come from a large-scale inhumane puppy mill. At just eight weeks old, puppies are taken from their mothers, shipped to pet stores for resale. They are born in unsanitary conditions and may suffer from serious health conditions. Meanwhile, the moms are bred over and over and over again with no veterinary care and in extremely deplorable conditions while spending their entire life in small waste-encrusted wire cages with no care or attention. They are just breeding factories that churn out puppies for large profits. In the absence of federal regulations, well over 150 towns, cities, and counties in New Jersey have already passed humane pet store ordinances, and I would really love to see the town of Oakland join them in helping to end this cruelty, as these local laws will prevent pet stores from selling puppies sourced from commercial breeding facilities. I would also be very happy to share any additional information that you would like to receive and/or schedule more time to speak about this important ordinance with you. Many thanks for your time and consideration regarding this ordinance.
Thank you so much. Do you want to leave that with the clerk?
Sure.
Okay. Anybody else wish to address the council?
Yeah. Oops.
Yes, sir. Name and address.
Richard Jaretsky, J-A-R-E-T-S-K-Y, and I live in Cliffest. I've been involved last two and a half, well, about three years now, going around in mostly Bergen County, trying to get these same ordinances that Jill was asking for here in Oakland. There was one passed in the last couple of years in Ramsey and Mawa, Hillsdale. I mean, half of Bergen County already has the ordinances, so I hope you will join the 150-plus other towns across the state that have passed it. And if anybody isn't familiar with puppy mills, just Google puppy mills, and you'll see the horrible conditions that these puppies come from. And I don't think you want to be a part, you know, I think you'll not want to be supporting that by ever letting a store come in and selling them. And it's proactive, you know, like Jill said, you don't have a store here selling puppies, thank God, but if they tried to come in, they wouldn't be able to. And hopefully, we'll get the state bill passed, but that's not guaranteed, so in the meantime, we're doing it town by town. So that's about it. I thank you for your time, and I do have these cards. It briefly explains what puppy mills are, like I said, if you don't know about them. So what, do you have seven people here?
Mm-hmm. You just leave it with the clerk.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Jaretsky.
Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Anybody else wish to address the everybody? Name and address?
Yes, Steve Penosian, 69 Glen Gray. I've got two things to share tonight. One is I agree with making it a political statement that the chief of police took the action that he did, but it's already been said, and I'm not gonna repeat it, but the issue that I have is now I have to be concerned about putting political signs on my lawn if we've got a police force that's gonna look at stuff like this, and I know other people are concerned about that, so there's a concern there. I don't know what you can do about it, but I think some sort of action needs to be taken. The second thing is, you know I live on Glen Gray, and Glen Gray was closed for about a little over a year and a half, and we had to deal with the speeding that was going on in Glen Gray. And now that it's closed, it's back to its nice and quiet, peaceful road, and we enjoy it. But I now take longer walks, so I'm now taking that scenic walk through and across Patriots Way Bridge. Now, I know that stretch between Patriots Way Bridge and Ramapo Valley Road, nobody lives there, but I walk between 6:30 and 7:30 in the morning, and I gotta say, nobody's really being bothered by it, but there's a lot of speeding that goes on. It's the same percentage, it's the two or three out of 10 that just barreled down that road, I would say 40 or 50 miles per hour. And I wouldn't normally say anything, but the other day, when I was crossing from that walkway to that street that goes to those homes right off of Patriots Way Bridge, I walked between the lanes, and I heard a car coming, and I looked, and I said, I don't think this person's gonna slow down. So I stepped back, and I just waved, you know, like slowed down. I think the person, the woman, thought I was waving to her, she just waved to me and whizzed by. I think it's a new revenue stream. I joked with Richard earlier. Something's gotta be done. I don't know that really anybody's getting hurt, but the driving's crazy on that road between the houses.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll let traffic safety know. Anybody else?
Matt Gooder, 72 Highawat. So with those comments there, I find it amusing that you guys are upset that the chief of police, you know, shared his First Amendment right and spoke on his opinion of how he feels. I'm sure if he supported anybody on this stage, you guys would praise him, or if he went against somebody that was running against you, you guys would be okay with that. These gentlemen right here, they're not biased to anybody. They took an oath, they do their job. They do their job very, very well. All right, so nobody should be concerned that the cops are gonna target you. Stupid. Absolutely stupid. You guys are making it political.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anybody else? Not seeing anybody? Do you have a motion to close? Motion to close?
So moved.
Do you have a second? Second? Kevin, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, moving on to approval of minutes. We have got October 28th, 2025. Do the motion approve?
So moved.
Do the second?
Second.
Anybody have any changes or any changes to the minutes? Not seeing anything? Roll call.
Council President Slazinski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Saliani?
Yes.
All right, we have October 28th, 2025 executive minutes. If anybody has any changes, it has to be done in the executive session. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do the second?
Second.
Roll call.
Council President Slazinski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Saliani?
Yes.
All right, we have special announcements. We have several raffle licenses, do it as a consent agenda. I have authorized raffle license RL 1567 for the Knights of Columbus.
1576.
1576 for the Knights of Columbus, number 5846, on November 21st, 2025, for a Tricky Train Supportive Barks Food Distribution at Pond's Food Pantry at 7 Courthouse Place. We have authorized raffle license RL 1577 for the Indian Hills High School PAC on February 27th for a 50/50 in support of Indian Hills sports teams at the Knights of Columbus 7 Courthouse Place. We have authorized raffle license RL 1578 for Indian Hills PAC on December 19th for a raffle in support of Indian Hills Dance Team at Indian Hills High School, 97 Yoppo Avenue. We have approved social affairs permit for the BPO Elks Lodge 2167 on December 13th, 2025, from 6:00 to 11:00 PM for a casino night benefit in the Oakland Elks Lodge Charities. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So if, we have half dozen resolutions, there's consent agenda, we have resolution canceling, 25295, resolution canceling capital balances, 259296, resolution canceling grant receivables balances, 25297 for budget transfer, 25298, resolution authorizing signatories for petty cash, 25299, resolution authorizing grant agreement with the CBDG for the Grand View Ave and Acorn Ave improvements, 25300, amend Murphy, Schiller, Wilks contract, and 25301, authorize temporary hire technical assistant for the building department. Does anybody wish to point it out? Not seeing anything? Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do the second?
Second.
Mr. Slazinski, roll call.
Council President Slazinski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Saliani?
Yes.
All right, we have no ordinance, we're work session. We're gonna talk about the Allen Site Improvements and Engineering. Mr. Coons?
Yeah, just a brief item. You'll probably be seeing something on the next agenda as we get ready for America's 250th next year. There are a number of site improvements we're looking to make at the Van Allen House, including a new bridge, taking care of the driveway and some drainage issues and some general site work, new barn doors for the.
Garage.
For the garage area, and so we'll be looking to move ahead with that before the end of the year to get that work done in, you know, as early as possible in 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Coons. Any questions from the council? Not seeing any? All right, does anybody from the council have any new business? Not seeing any. Does anybody have any old business?
Yes, I have some old business.
Councilman?
Rich, I just forwarded you an email. It had actually gone to my personal account. I talked about it with members of, I think, yourself and DPW in the past. There's been some repairs to a walkway by Columbia Bank of street painting, and I think we were waiting for the builder to either do it, if not, DPW's gonna do it. If you just follow up on that email and see where we're doing progress.
Sure. Of course. Anybody else? Old business? All right, we're up to committee liaison reports. Mr. Salieri, you want to start us off?
Can you start that way?
Sure. All right. Ms. Rosen?
Thank you, Mayor. Shade Tree Committee met on Monday, November 3rd, 2025. They were currently working on the forestry management plan, which I think will be coming to you for the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay. They'd also like to discuss deer management program with the mayor and other council members. I believe we probably have to get the state wildlife involved as well. It's my understanding that the deer census should be coming around, that there's a grant available for such deer management, that we're gonna be, you know, included in that?
We are. Actually, Ramsey's the lead agency, they secured a grant, and it'll be all or most of the towns in northwest Bergen participating in that grant project.
Great.
It'll take place over this winter.
Okay. Great, so I'll report that back to them.
Just so everybody knows, do you want to explain that drone survey, Councilwoman?
Drone survey?
Drone survey for the deer to see the assessment as far as how much, what the population is.
That I'm, didn't know. So anyway, for Arts Committee, its next meeting is Monday, November 17th, and the outdoor market is this Saturday from 10:00 to 3:00. So.
That's it?
That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms., Councilman Slazinski?
I have no report tonight.
All right. Councilman Saliani?
So on behalf of Councilman Talamiani, who couldn't make it, he asked me to give an update for recreation. So from a recreation standpoint, there is the 2025 Rec Wrestling Turkey Trot 5K Run Walk. This is Thanksgiving morning, and this is $30 to enter. It will be at Indian Hills High School. Please, it's a family event, we're looking for participants. So once again, it's, the check-in time is 7:00 AM. Race begins at 7:30 AM, and the location is Indian Hills High School, $30 per person. There's more information at oaklandrec.org. One more second. I apologize. From the OCC, the OCC passed their budget capital request and are very much looking forward volunteers, the newsletter committee, and the welcome website, social media committee. So if anyone's interested in joining those two committees, I do have to say, attending the beginning of OCC this year has been very fun. I didn't realize how much work they put into a lot of their committees. They really need committee members. Just the social media and website committee probably take, they can be their own committees, there's so much work that's put into them, so they really need some more volunteers. We're a little light, so anyone who wants to join, please go to OCC@Oakland-NJ.org. We're looking for those, we're looking for volunteers there. From public safety, I do want to start with the, I do want to start with the fire report. Want to say congratulations to both, the two members who were sworn in tonight. Also, this Wednesday, the fire, is gonna be graduating firefighter Anthony Mizola, who's a senior Indian Hills, and Elijah Diaz, who graduated from Indian Hills last year. They both joined as junior members and have shown incredible dedication. The academy is a seven, the academy is a seven, seven-month, 170-hour program, which classes twice a week and few Saturdays, covering ladders, hose search and rescue, fire attack, SCBA, hazmat training. They must pass a written and practical test to earn their certificate. Congratulations to these young men. December 20th, we'll be driving, congratulate those two men for graduating. December 20th, the fire department will be doing their, driving Santa around on the back of the fire truck. Please check the website, Facebook, Instagram, for times and locations stops. They are in need of volunteers who are interested, who are interested in joining the fire department. So please stop by the firehouse on Yoppo Ave on Monday nights.
Let's just let the record reflect that Councilman Pignotelli joined us.
Sorry, we had a first aid call.
And those were the, those, oh, hold on, no, I have another one from Mr. Pig. All right. unsocialized puppies for the sale to unsuspecting consumers for hundreds and sometimes thousands of dollars. It would also encourage people to consider adoption through shelters and rescues and even through a responsible breeder if that is their preference. The ordinance would also help address the pet overpopulation crisis and animal suffering. It is well documented that most pet store puppies come from a large-scale inhumane puppy mill. At just eight weeks old, puppies are taken from their mothers, shipped to pet stores for resale. They are born in unsanitary conditions and may suffer from serious health conditions. Meanwhile, the moms are bred over and over and over again with no veterinary care and in extremely deplorable conditions while spending their entire life in small waste-encrusted wire cages with no care or attention. They are just breeding factories that churn out puppies for large profits. In the absence of federal regulations, well over 150 towns, cities, and counties in New Jersey have already passed humane pet store ordinances, and I would really love to see the town of Oakland join them in helping to end this cruelty, as these local laws will prevent pet stores from selling puppies sourced from commercial breeding facilities. I would also be very happy to share any additional information that you would like to receive and/or schedule more time to speak about this important ordinance with you. Many thanks for your time and consideration regarding this ordinance.
Thank you so much. Do you want to leave that with the clerk?
Sure.
Okay. Anybody else wish to address the council?
Oops.
Yes, sir. Name and address.
Richard Jaretski, J-A-R-E-T-S-K-Y, and I live in Clifton. I've been involved last two and a half, well, about three years now, going around in mostly Bergen County, trying to get these same ordinances that Jill was asking for here in Oakland. There was one passed in the last couple of years in Ramsey and Mawa, Hillsdale. I mean, half of Bergen County already has the ordinances, so I hope you will join the 150-plus other towns across the state that have passed it. And if anybody isn't familiar with puppy mills, just Google puppy mills, and you'll see the horrible conditions that these puppies come from. And I don't think you want to be a part of...you know, I think you'll not want to be supporting that by ever letting a store come in and selling them. And it's proactive, you know? Like Jill said, you don't have a store. You're selling puppies, thank God, but if they tried to come in, they wouldn't be able to. And hopefully, we'll get the state bill passed, but that's not guaranteed, so in the meantime, we're doing it town by town. So that's about it. I thank you for your time, and I do have these cards. It briefly explains what puppy mills are. Like I said, if you don't know about them. So what do you have, seven people here?
No. You're just leaving it to the clerk.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Jaretski.
Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Anybody else wish to address the upper body? Name and address?
Steve Penozian, 69 Glen Gray. I've got two things to share tonight. One is I agree with making it a political statement that the chief of police took the action that he did, but it's already been said, and I'm not gonna repeat it, but the issue that I have is now I have to be concerned about putting political signs on my lawn if we've got a police force that's gonna look at stuff like this, and I know other people are concerned about that. So there's a concern there. I don't know what you can do about it, but I think some sort of action needs to be taken. The second thing is, you know I live on Glen Gray, and Glen Gray was closed for about a little over a year and a half, and we had to deal with this speeding that was going on in Glen Gray. And now that it's closed, it's back to its nice and quiet, peaceful road, and we enjoy it. But I now take longer walks, so I'm now taking that scenic walk through and across Patriots Way Bridge. Now, I know that stretch between Patriots Way Bridge and Ramifell Valley Road, nobody lives there, but I walk between 6:30 and 7:30 in the morning, and I gotta say, nobody's really being bothered by it, but there's a lot of speeding that goes on. It's the same percentage. It's the two or three out of 10 that just barrel down that road. I would say 40 or 50 miles per hour. And I wouldn't normally say anything, but the other day, when I was crossing from that walkway to that street that goes to those homes right off of Patriots Way Bridge, I walked between the lanes, and I heard a car coming, and I looked, and I said, "I don't think this person's gonna slow down." So I stepped back, and I just waved, you know, like slowed down. I think the person, the woman, thought I was waving to her. She just waved to me and whizzed by. I think it's a new revenue stream. I joked with Richard earlier. Something's gotta be done. I don't know that really anybody's getting hurt, but the driving's crazy on that road between the houses.
Thank you, Mr. Phil. We'll look at traffic safety now. Anybody else?
Matt Gooder, 72 High Avenue. So with those comments there, I find it amusing that you guys are upset that the chief of police, you know, shared his First Amendment right and spoke on his opinion and how he feels. I'm sure if he supported anybody on this stage, you guys would praise him, or if he went against somebody that was running against you, you guys would be okay with that. These gentlemen right here, they're not biased to anybody. They took an oath. They do their job. They do their job very, very well. All right? So nobody should be concerned that the cops are gonna target you. Stupid. Absolutely stupid. You guys are making it political.
Thank you, Mr. Phil. Anybody else? Not seeing...anybody do you have a motion to approve? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Do you have a second? Second? Kevin? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, moving on to approval of minutes. We have got October 28th, 2025. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Anybody have any changes or any changes to the minutes? Not seeing anything? Roll call.
Council President Slazinski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Salyan?
Yes.
All right, we have October 28th, 2025 executive minutes. If anybody has any changes, it has to be done in the executive session. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Council President Slazinski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Salyan?
Yes. All right, we have special announcements. We have several raffle licenses. Do it as a consent agenda. I have authorized raffle license RL 1567 for the Knights of Columbus.
1576.
1576 for the Knights of Columbus, number 5846, on November 21st, 2025, for a Tricky Train Supportive Barts Food Distribution at the Pond's Food Pantry at 7 Courthouse Place. We have authorized raffle license RL 1577 for the Indian Hills High School PAC on February 27th for a 50/50 in support of Indian Hills sports teams at the Knights of Columbus 7 Courthouse Place. We have authorized raffle license RL 1578 for Indian Hills PAC on December 19th for raffle in support of Indian Hills Dance Team at Indian Hills High School, 97 Yoppo Avenue. We have approved social first permit for the BPO Elks Lodge 2167 on December 13th, 2025, from 6:00 to 11:00 p.m. for a casino night benefit in the Oakland Elks Lodge charity. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All in favor, Steve?
Yes.
Okay. We have half dozen resolutions. There's consent agenda. We have resolution canceling...have 25 295 resolution canceling capital balances. 25 296 resolution canceling grant receivables balances. 25 297 for budget transfer. 25 298 resolution authorizing signatories for petty cash. 25 299 resolution authorizing grant agreement with the CBDG for the Grandview Ave and Acorn Ave improvements. 25 300 amend Murphy, Schiller, Wilkes contract, and 25 301 authorize temporary hire technical assistant for the building department. Does anybody wish to point out? Not seeing anything? Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Slazinski? Roll call.
Council President Slazinski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Salyan?
Yes.
All right, we have no ordinance, we have work session. We're gonna talk about the Allen site improvements and engineering. Mr. Coons?
Yeah, just a brief item. You'll probably be seeing something on the next agenda as we get ready for America's 250th next year. There are a number of site improvements we're looking to make at the Ben Allen House, including a new bridge, taking care of the driveway and some drainage issues and some general site work. New barn doors for the...
Garage.
For the garage area, and so we'll be looking to move ahead with that before the end of the year to get that work done in, you know, as early as possible in 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Coons. Any questions from the council? Not seeing any? All right, does anybody from the council have any new business? Not seeing any. Does anybody have any old business?
Yes, I have some old business.
Councilman?
Rich, I just forwarded you an email. It had actually gone to my personal account. I talked about it with members of, I think, yourself and DPW in the past. There's been some repairs to a walkway by Columbia Bank of street painting, and I think we're waiting for the builder to either do it, if not, DPW's gonna do it. If you just follow up on that email and see where we are on progress.
Sure. Of course. Anybody else? Old business? All right, we're up to committee liaison reports. Mr. Salyan, you want to start us off?
Can you start that way?
Sure. All right. Ms. Rosen?
Thank you, mayor. Shade Tree Committee met on Monday, November 3rd, 2025. They were currently working on the forestry management plan, which I think will be coming to you for the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay. They'd also like to discuss deer management program with the mayor and other council members. I believe we probably have to get the state wildlife involved as well. It's my understanding that the deer census should be coming around, that there's a grant available for such a deer management, that we're gonna be, you know, included in that?
We are. Actually, Ramsey's the lead agency. They secured a grant, and it'll be all or most of the towns in northwest Bergen participating in that grant project.
Great.
It'll take place over this winter.
Okay. Great, so I'll report that back to them.
Just so everybody knows, do you want to explain that drone survey, Councilwoman?
The drone survey?
Drone survey for the deer to see the assessment as far as how much the population is.
So anyway, for Arts Committee, its next meeting is Monday, November 17th, and the outdoor market is this Saturday from 10 to 3.
That's it?
That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms...Councilman Sislinski?
I have no report tonight.
All right. Councilman Salyan?
So on behalf of Councilman Tellmane, who couldn't make it, he asked me to give an update for recreation. So from a recreation standpoint, there is the 2025 Rec Wrestling Turkey Trot 5K Run Walk. This is Thanksgiving morning, and this is $30 to enter. It will be at Indian Hills High School. Please, it's a family event. We're looking for participants. So once again, it's...the check-in time is 7:00 a.m. race begins at 7:30 a.m., and the location is Indian Hills High School. $30 per person. There's more information at OaklandRec.org. One more second. Pause of this. From the OCC. The OCC passed their budget capital request and are very much looking for volunteers, the newsletter committee, and the welcome website, social media committee. So if anyone's interested in joining those two committees, I do have to say, attending the beginning of OCC this year has been very fun. I didn't realize how much work they put into a lot of their committees. They really need committee members. Just the social media and website committee probably take...they can be their own committees. There's still much work that's put into them, so they really need some more volunteers. We're a little light, so anyone who wants to join, please go to OCC@Oakland-NJ.org. We're looking for those...we're looking for volunteers there. From public safety, I do want to start with the...do you want to start with the fire report? Want to say congratulations to both, the two members who were sworn in tonight. Also, this Wednesday, the firefighter is gonna be graduating firefighter Anthony Mizola, who's a senior Indian Hills, and Elijah Diaz, who graduated from Indian Hills last year. They both joined as junior members and have shown incredible dedication. The academy is a seven...the academy is a seven-month, 170-hour program, which classes twice a week and few Saturdays, covering ladders, hose search and rescue, fire attack, SCBA, hazmat training. They must pass a written and practical test to earn their certificate. Congratulations to these young men. December 20th, we'll be driving...congratulate those two men for graduating. December 20th, the fire department will be doing their...driving Santa around on the back of the fire truck. Please check the website, Facebook, Instagram for times and locations stops. They are in need of volunteers who are interested in joining the fire department, so please stop by the firehouse on Yoppo Ave on Monday nights.
Let's just let the record reflect that Councilman Pignotelli joined us.
Sorry, we had a first aid call.
And those were the...those were...oh, hold on. No, I have another one from Mr. Pig. All right, update from the first aid squad. The Oakland First Aid Squad, October report. They responded to 59 calls of service, traveled 2,000 miles, spent 102 hours on calls, provided EMTs as rec football trainers for Oakland football. I do think we need to point that out, too. They've actually saved the recreation some money by being those volunteer...being those volunteer trainers at the game, so appreciate that. That's my report.
That's it? Councilman Pignotelli, report?
The only thing I have to say is about...tomorrow is Veterans Day. Please, we have a ceremony. We have Vets Park at 10:45 for an 11 o'clock ceremony. A lot of Oakland veterans will be there. I'm a member of the American Legion, and they do deserve to be thanked. Some of them were wounded in Vietnam and other wars, and it's not the injury...only the injury on the outside that you see. There are injuries on the inside, too, so please support them. When you see them, tell them thank you for their service. That's it, mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, we have the bills to be paid. Bills to be paid, $406,725.96. So moved. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Councilman Sislinski. Roll call.
Council President Slazinski?
Yes.
Councilman Pignotelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Salyan?
Yes.
All right, do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next Borough Council meeting will be held on Tuesday, November 2020, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. here at the Borough Council chambers. Thank you, everybody, for attending, and have a good night.